I was on city council with Mr., um, the former city manager, Mr. Osborne. We were trying to get resources for, uh, Step 5. Is that still city manager? Is it still in the works?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Thompson is, uh, has sent me information as well as Douglas County Chamber. That's gonna require federal funding to allow for that. So that's where, um, we're partnering with not only just, uh, the county, but we're looking at federal funding. So I'll be talking to them, um, at the DC fly-in.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I had. Thank you. We'll go to the left, uh, Council. For intermission, it's time to sit, have a seat, Pastor. The lights are blinking, the lights are blinking. tonight, which is Thursday, September the fourteenth. Our invocation will be done by Pastor JP of Kingdom Builders Ministry and the Pledge of Leg- oh, that isn't, okay.
I'm filling in tonight, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you so much, our pastor, um, our doctor. We, uh, and then after that, we'll have our Pledge Allegions, uh, Dr. Francisco. Uh, we'll have our Pledge Allegions by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you. Our reading comes from Psalm twenty-four. Who may ascend the mountain of the Lord? Who may stand in his holy place? The one who has clean hands and a pure heart. Who does not trust in an idol or swear by false God? They will receive blessings from the Lord and vindication from God their Savior. Such is the generation of those who seek him, who seek your face, God of Jacob. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, I just pray blessings upon our mayor and the city council, Lord. I ask, Lord, that you give them the wisdom and guidance to do their duties and what is best for our city. Lord, I ask that you give us pure hearts and pure minds and that whatever we say is pleasing to you, Lord. And I just ask that you bless all of those who have come tonight and be with them and be with this meeting as they proceed. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Dr. Francisco, we appreciate you standing, being the ram in the bush and bringing us the invocation. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where items for discussion, uh, will be taken tonight and no official action will be taken on these items until next Monday at our voting meeting at six PM. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over so that we'll all be on the same page as we go throughout the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in, uh, you not continuing to speak. This evening, we will turn the microphones off if you continue to, uh, insult someone. One person at a time speaking, please, when you come to the podium, please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation while you're at the podium. We ask that you would please address all of your concerns and comments to the chairperson when you're presenting. I remind you that we only are required to accept public comments during required public hearings. And if you have any printed materials that you'd like to give to myself and council members, we ask that you would please give those to our Assistant City Clerk, um, Ms. Candace, and she will make copies and disseminate the information, uh, to the council. Um, the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or representative for that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us understand, uh, your information so that we'll be able to vote next week. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of twenty minutes for those that are in favor of the item and twenty minutes for those are opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. If you desire to speak, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card. They are located outside on the desk. They're blue cards. Please put your information on that card, hand them to our Assistant City Clerk, and then when you come to the podium, uh, please give us your name and address for the record. Each person has one opportunity to speak, and again, you have five minutes. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here to hear your information, deliberate, and make decisions based on your information. Um, that is it. Again, if you have any printed material, please give that to our city clerk, and, uh, hopefully everyone understands the rules for the meeting. We will follow the agenda. There are printed copies outside. If you don't, uh, choose to have a printed, uh, agenda option, then you can follow us on the screen. We'll move on with the agenda as it is presented. We'll move on now to Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under the Economic Development Committee, and that is to consider and adopt a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a proposed tax incentives agreement with DC Blocks Inc. for the acquisition and construction of a colocation data center in the City of Douglasville, Georgia in up to three phases. And we have tonight with us, Mr. Chris Pumphrey of Elevate Douglas, to explain to us the arcane and esoteric ways of the tax incentive agreement world.
SAT works.
Good, good evening, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the members of the council. Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, eighty-five, twelve Bowden Street, Douglasville. When we present, uh, projects to you all for consideration on a tax incentives plan, uh, that always typically, uh, comes with a, a resolution that basically is acknowledging your support, uh, for that project. And then attached to that will come, uh, a tax incentives agreement, which basically outlines everything that was in the resolution, but it's in essence saying that a company is intending to do these things, create these number of jobs, pay the salary, invest in, um, in this amount of capital over this period of time to run this particular operation. And then on the flip of that is a commitment to provide a tax incentive for, for that investment. So that is a tax incentives agreement. When I came before you, maybe a month or two ago, I'm not sure how long ago it was, we presented that first resolution, but we did not have the tax incentives agreement in place at that particular time. So what's before you is basically just the agreement, um, that aligns with what you approved, um, the last time I was up here. Um, and just as a reminder, uh, this is for DC Blocks, which is a colocation data center facility. Um, the total investment over three phases is one point two billion dollars in the, uh, real estate, uh, the construction of the, the facilities and the components that make it into a data center. Uh, and then on top of that, DC Blocks will then lease space with inside the data center to customers, and those customers are basically those that own the servers. Um, the servers that are in the facility are not a part of this tax incentives plan, only the investment by DC Blocks. And just as a kind of a recap of that last meeting, those investments that come from, uh, those customers are roughly two to three X of the investment made by DC Blocks. So in this regard, we kinda kept it conservative, just assume about two point one billion dollars that would be invested by the customers in the facility that is a hundred percent taxable. Um, so there's no property tax incentive on that. Um, one of the key components of this plan was to ensure that what we were providing, since it is three phases, is not just saying you can have this incentive and you can make the investments over a fifty-year period and the incentive is still in place. We had to put some measures and some performance measures in place to basically say that you had, you could start the building, you know, next year, uh, but then by twenty twenty-seven, that building needs to be completed, and then you can then, you then must start the next building. And then you have a timeframe for that next building, and then you can start the third building. What we're not allowing them to do is do building one, and then fifteen years later, come back and do building two, and then fifteen years later, come back and do building three. It all has to be done within a period of time. So those are the details that are outlined in the tax incentives agreement, as well as just keep main, ensuring that the investment levels, job numbers, excuse me, and average salaries are in place. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. And just to make sure everybody understands very clearly, the city is not on the hook for one point two billion dollars, nor are we lending anybody one point two billion dollars. That is company investment, so.
Correct.
Um, I will actually turn it over to my colleagues and see if anybody has any questions or comments at this time. Or, Madam, Councilman Nastis will start me to you on the end.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, maybe it's just me, but I don't see any actual numbers attached to this. Is that intentionally missing, or?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, legal sent everything over, so I'm not a hundred percent sure what you are saying.
Exhibit A is blank on my, on my copy, so.
Hey, Chris, so the exhibit A was sent back for revisions. Um, it should be available and uploaded by tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll reserve any questions until I can actually look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
If I may ask, what was exhibit A, just so I'm sure? Okay, which we did this morning. Got it.
The, the numbers maybe that you're referring to, um, I have reviewed that document, um, what it, what it's, are you referring to the, the jobs requirements and the dol- the hourly?
The dollar.
Okay, so the, the salary, the salary for the employees is guaranteed to be, guaranteed to be sixty-two fifty per hour, a minimum?
Yeah, that's in the resolution. It, it's the, it's the tax portion that is not showing there.
Yes, there's, there's gonna be a chart, um, there's a number of charts for each phase, um, that will, that will show that breakdown. Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Madam Mayor, you have a question?
No, sir, I said it was a good question.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from, Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Is, Chris, is there, is there any reason why you cannot share or update us on what the location is, is, is where it is located within our city? Is there a problem with that?
No, sir, honestly, I, and I remember you mentioning that last time when we sent the documents over, it just slipped my mind.
I'm, I'm just curious, and I, and I don't even remember that comment last time. I'm just curious if you can tell us where this would be going.
Yeah, I'll tell you exactly where it is. So it's, it's inside the Riverside West Business Park, which is right off of Riverside Parkway.
Okay.
The River, yeah, River West Business Park, they have multiple names, uh, right off Riverside Parkway. It sits, um, actually adjacent to the Microsoft, um, data center that's inside the park.
Approximately how many acres?
Uh, approximately fifty-five acres, fifty-five acres that, that it sits on.
Site's already developed?
Uh, no. It is, um, yeah, it, it's raw land in the fact that Rooker hasn't kinda done any work on that particular tract.
Okay.
But the road, all the infrastructure is, is there. There will be, there will have to be a brand-new substation that's built on site, um, but they, they will have to do a significant amount of work, build a bridge, and a number of things. So it's, it's an expensive endeavor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? All right. Um, but all that's seeing, none, we will take this matter up on, on Monday after we, after the quest for the, um, attachment that includes the financial figures on, and the abatement, uh, details, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you to our Elevate Douglas Director, Mr. Pumphrey. We appreciate that. We'll move on then to item number six, which is Finance Committee, chaired by Council- We'll move on then to item number six, which is Finance Committee, chaired by council member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Finance.
Yes, sir.
That's to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated for work to be completed, which includes the coating project, roof repairs, brick wall restoration, and new gutters and downspouts at the Alice Hawthorne Center at Jesse Davis Park. Mr. Greg Roberts is going to help us with that, and I just want to thank him for bringing me up to speed as to what was actually going on. Mr. Roberts was here in our 5 o'clock meeting. If you all remember the drone pictures of the Alice Hawthorne building, I presume everyone remembers what that was and the way it looked, the blue, all-blue building that was there. Well, it's now opened up for everyone to see. It's not tucked back in a corner somewhere now. It's actually going to be front and center. So we'll invite Mr. Roberts to take over and give us information about this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, Greg Roberts, Public Services Department, City of Douglasville. Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, as Mr. Adams mentioned, so the Hawthorne Center as we know it now has been there, I guess about 2002, was that about right? So about 21, 22 years. It's a great facility. It's still used every day in every way. A lot of improvements have been made on the inside. There had been some discussion months ago, as we started moving toward the construction of the overall Jesse Davis Park, I mentioned to a couple of people, you know, when those trees come down, we're going to ask ourselves why we didn't take this into consideration. So myself and a couple of staff members, and obviously under the guidance of the city manager and her office, got with Garland Services or Garland Company, and this is the same company that, if you recall a few years ago, painted the exterior of City Hall. They've done roofwork for us. So they are an exterior commercial facility. They're experts in this. They do a lot of work for a lot of major companies we all know about, such as Southwire. They just about do everything at Southwire on the exterior of their buildings. So they're a fairly large company doing a lot of work. They make components for these buildings. So we had our contact to come out and meet us two or three times, actually. It took him a little bit to figure out what to recommend to us, because if you've never painted a metal building like that, you don't just paint it. You're throwing good money at bad money when you do that. So they had to come up with some ways. They had to do some testing on that exterior, and they've completed that. So Garland, the same as they worked for us before, they're a part of the U.S. Communities, which we are a part of, and they bring the project together for us, and they bid it to contractors for us, and then they bring that back to us. And so they have done that part of the work. So what we're talking about tonight is asking for the mayor and council approval to move forward with this. So what this involves is for the roof, so we've been experiencing roof leaks off and on for the last four or five years, and we've just done maintenance here and there. So the ultimate problem on that building is there are, I can probably say, a few hundred ribbit joints throughout that ceiling, and where those ribbits are, there's rubber bushings, and those have all dry rotted. They have to be drilled out and put back in. Then that ceiling will have to be coated and repaired after that. The exterior will have to be seal-coated and primed and prepped, then painted. And so we have put them in contact with our contractors over there, our architect firm, I can't remember the name, but everybody else does. Marcus mentioned it a minute ago. And so they're aware of the color schemes on all the new facilities over there. So it will be the same Hawthorne Center, but it's going to be matched to everything new we're doing, and then there will be some exterior work around that rock, that concrete look, rock on the exterior of the building. They're going to give that a new look to make it match what we're doing throughout the new project over there. And so their proposal is $318,749 for this project. The initial verbal quote was about $600,000, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. So, and I understand that this is still able to be funded through splash funds.
Yes, sir.
As a part of that project there, correct?
That's right.
So we will be using splash funds to pay for this, to bring this up to the same quality or the same look as what we're building?
Yes.
Okay. Does Garland have a local office here?
They do not, but they are here in the Atlanta area, and they work all over the Atlanta area.
Just curious. I knew that we'd had a good rapport with them on other projects, just curious if they were actually local or if they're coming from Ohio. I'll open the floor for questions or comments. I'll start on this end. Anyone have any question or comment concerning the item? Madam Mayor, anyone? Did you have a question, Madam Mayor?
Just quickly, coating project, the roof repair. The roof, I thought it was like a metal roof.
It is.
In these repairs?
But it has steel beam, steel I-beams, just like in this building. And then the exterior of the top of the roof where it's attached to it has ribbit joints holding, binding it all together.
Yes, sir.
And so those joints are just, they're, well, they're kind of like my face, they're getting kind of old.
Okay.
Got to have a little work.
Your face is looking great, Mr. Roberts.
So that's what it is, is they would have to physically drill all of those out for about three minutes. We had talked about it in the department about us potentially doing it, but when I realized how many joints there were, it's like, no, that would be up there for months. And so it was something we needed a contractor to do.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Others, questions, comments?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, did you have one?
No, I was just saying, thank you, Mr. Trump. Even with metal buildings, you still have sealant joints.
That's right.
That are organic, that break down over time, so they have lifespans, and this is about the right lifespan for most of those ceilings, so it has to be done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Can't see Councilwoman Burdany, but I'm assuming, okay. Did you have any comment, ma'am?
I have any questions, if my comment may.
Yes, go ahead, Sam.
Greg, on that building, how many bids went out on that project?
For this?
Yes.
I can't say. I would have to defer to Garland, but we have used them for other projects very similar to this. Garland is a manufacturer of products, and so they have contractors that are certified to use their products, and that's how they go about that process, as they've explained to us before.
So $318,000?
I'm sorry?
You said the whole total, complete, paint and all, $318,000?
Yeah, $318,749.
Mr. Davis, it does appear that there were other bids in the packet. I believe it shows on page?
I believe it was two.
Page two of three, right below Scope of Work, and they looked at other, they did have one other price on that that was higher.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay. We will not ask that this be placed on the consent agenda. We'll take it up on Monday, and we appreciate your information and your help on it, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. If anybody has questions, just get to me.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Finance Chair will move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs, chaired by council member Dr. Burdany.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item eight is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, chaired by council member Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one item, and I'll start with item eight. Authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and Douglas County Sheriff Office for municipal inmate jail service. Ms. Hampton?
Yes, sir. We were able to work out some terms that we were going back and forth with the sheriff and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners on, and that's inclusive of allowing us to have an extended period for out, so they have gone to the 120 days. They are still at the rate of $60 per inmate. The deputy chief can talk to you all about those negotiations, as well as other opportunities that we looked at, but as it states right now, we are recommending that you do approve this agreement. If we are looking to do anything else, it would take us some time to do that, but at this point, I'll turn it over to the deputy chief.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question while Mr. Davidson's coming to the podium?
Yes, come on.
Did you say an extension of the present agreement, Ms. City Manager?
This would be a new agreement.
Be a new agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor and Council, J.R. Davidson, 2083 Fairborough Road. So this was a negotiation between the chief and the sheriff. We did look at other options. In the end, because of the cost of those other options, and obviously running our own jail, this is going to be the most feasible avenue for us. The rate for daily inmate fees, these are for municipal court prisoners, is going from $37.52 to $60 per day.
From 37 to 62?
Yes, sir.
What's it cost over at Lee's Hotel?
Councilwoman Wise?
Yes, sir. So do you all have any idea what the going rate is in other municipalities that have jails? I mean, is the rate that they're charging as pretty standard?
Yes, we did explore other counties in the metro Atlanta area, and there are some counties that are much higher.
Okay.
And other counties that are lower.
And is it my understanding that this is only a one-year deal?
Two years.
Two years.
Yes, 24 months.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We will have to probably next year start, you know, looking and starting that negotiation since it's only two years, so I would definitely say as long as the negotiations took this time, that probably toward the end of next year, we need to start having those conversations again, with the expectation that there's the potential that they may go up, based on the research that the deputy chief and the chief were able to look into at other surrounding jurisdictions. The other thing is, I know the chief has been in communication with the judge as well. One of the things we are determining is that our inmate lockup rate is a lot higher than other local governments, so those are some things that we're looking into as well.
So what is the capacity? Do you have any idea the capacity changes from day to day?
The jail's capacity?
Yes, for us, what we pay for.
If I remember correctly, it was 1,500 inmates. Are you talking about how many people we house there?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know the exact number, but basically it's people who either can't make a bond on a city charge or who the judge sentences for either the city charge or a probation violation.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. So we've never had, there's never been a situation where we were not able to have an inmate housed? Like, has the capacity been so high to where we've had to send it to anyone else? I don't know of that, but has it happened?
No, ma'am, not as long as I've been here, there hasn't been.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Madam Mayor? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we just put it back on the agenda for Monday, just in case for more clarity come up. Thank you, that's all we have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our deputy chief. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Personnel and Organization Committee, chaired by council member Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in personnel and organization.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by council member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We want to have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Hold a public hearing and consider request to adopt a proposed ordinance to amend the sections 2.02 and 13.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Douglasville to add uses for taproom, tasting room, wine tasting room, brew pub, wine bar, micro distillery, and micro brewery. To amend the definition for micro brewery and to add definitions for micro distillery, taproom, tasting room, wine tasting room, brew pub, wine bar, brewery, distillery, and winery. Ms. Miranda Jordan is going to help us with that. Ms. Jordan?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So this item is a follow-up to the item that came before yourselves in July, which was the amendment to Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances. That was an overhaul to the alcohol ordinance in total, which primarily was done in order to be able to remove any distance requirements from the downtown area. As a follow-up to that, there were a number of the items that council created with the amendment to Chapter 10 that were not listed as uses in the Unified Development Ordinance. So in order for any businesses to establish here, we would need to create the items that were not previously listed in the Unified Development Ordinance, and we would also need to amend some of the definitions so that the definitions in the UDO that are currently there match what it's currently in the new adoption of Chapter 10. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to point out to you on the proposed ordinance, which starts on page three of your attachment, that each of the types of uses are going to have certain zoning classifications where they are either permitted or permitted only by special use permit. So the taprooms, tasting rooms, wine tasting rooms would be permitted under CBD, general commercial, regional marketplace, PUD, and the town center mixed use, and by permitted use, and then for special use in neighborhood commercial or office institutional. And the council would again have to grant that special use and would have the discretion to do so. The brew pub and wine bar would be permitted use in CBD, GC, RMP, PUD, and TCMU, and would be special use in neighborhood commercial or office institutional. The brewery and micro brewery classifications would be allowed in CBD, PUD, and TCMU, special use only in general commercial, office distribution, light and heavy industrial, regional marketplace, neighborhood commercial. And the distillery, winery, and micro distillery would be allowed in light industrial, heavy industrial, and office distribution as permitted uses, and would be special uses in general commercial, office distribution, oh, that is a typo, I apologize, general commercial, regional marketplace, and central business district. And again, the definitions, some of the definitions were already present, one of which was the brewery definition, but we are proposing to add the, again, the definitions to match the ones that already exist in Chapter 10 that was recently adopted. The Planning Commission reviewed this on September 6, and they made a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I have a question before we open the floor for people to speak. It looks as though you have attempted in every way possible to give each and every definition those normal classifications of zoning and then those that could, and it appears that every one of these does have the opportunity under a special use permit to be allowed.
That is correct for all of the commercial and industrial uses.
There are just so many different types of these establishments that it is very, very, very confusing to me if I were going to come into the community as to what I would need to apply for and what type of zoning I would need, or how often I'd have to go through a special land use permit request. And so it seems somewhat of a very difficult roadmap to follow, but you've done a great job in trying to put it on paper.
I anticipate that our 2.02, which is our allowed uses in the UDO, it's a nice, beautiful color chart. I anticipate that once this information is plugged into that, that will be a little bit more clear, and then all of the definitions are going to be lumped in their alphabetical spot in 13.02, which is the just general definition section for the UDO. So I anticipate that that would be a little bit easier to read just by chart. It'll say P, P, S, et cetera, for those classifications. The reason they're not all lumped together in one section here is because of the NAICS code that applies to that particular type of establishment. They're actually lumped together by that code so that there will be one line on the allowed uses table.
Got it.
So I hope that, I anticipate that that would make it a little bit easier to understand.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are holding a public hearing, so I want to give opportunity to anyone that might want to come forward and speak either for or against this item. I'll open the floor for that at this time. Anyone to speak either for or against, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments that council or Madam Mayor may have? Okay, thank you very much. We'll take this up on Monday for a vote. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Planning and Development.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember How, oh, I apologize. Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on then to Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am, may I have items?
Yes, sir.
Item A, hold a public hearing to consider a request for a change in agent outlet manager and transfer of the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment, current licensing, Warner Business LLC, DBA Global Food Mark, proposed license Hawk Food and Gas, INC., DBA Global Food Mark. Location, 12241 Veteran Memorial Highway, current agent outlet manager, Moran Hadya. Proposed agent outlet manager, Shanaz Sultana. And the required fees have been paid into the finance department. I hope I didn't chop your name up too much. Will you please come on down? Thank you. Come on down and give your name and address for file records, please.
Shanaz Sultana. 12441 Veteran Memorial Highway. Douglasville City.
Okay, and this is a change in agent outlet manager?
Yeah, ownership change, yes.
And who would be the agent outlet manager? Are they here with us?
Shanaz Sultana.
Okay. How would you go about training your, your staff and employees, alcohol and cigarettes, alcohol and beverages?
No, I didn't hear you.
How do you train your staff?
Mm-hmm.
For alcohol?
Yeah, 21 years. 21-year age. We had to sell to the customer.
Do you have any kind of program that they take before you, before they start?
No, we had to, we had to train our two people together with three total work together. So we teach, learn, we teach to them.
Okay, is there, is there a company that comes out or do you do the instructions teaching?
No, the previous owner, we learn from them, we get the training from them 10, 15 days from them, then we continue from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council?
Yes, Mr. Davis. Do you all have previous experience in retail, in convenience stores?
Yeah, yeah.
Gas pumps?
Yes, yes.
And selling alcohol?
Yes.
Okay, and have you had any issues or are you familiar with the ordinances and the requirements within our city of Douglasville?
I, I'm in this business for 20 years.
Okay, and have you ever owned an establishment here in our community?
No, this is first time in Douglas County, but I have in Atlanta and Decatur and DeKalb County.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, Madam Mayor, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, and and what would be hours of operation?
This is 24 hours.
24?
Yeah, 24 hours location.
Okay. At this time, we have to have a public hearing, and we give five minutes for those who speak for this item and five minutes for those who speak against this item. So right now, we open up the floor for the public hearing.
Okay.
And like we see no takers, at the time we close the public hearing, come back on Monday and we'll let you know, okay?
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
What time, Monday 6th?
Thank you, you're good, you're good to go. Okay, moving right along, item B, hold a public hearing to consider a request for a change in agent outlet manager and a transfer alcoholic beverage license for retail package sale of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment, current license Douglasville Mark LLC, proposed license 9318 Douglasville LLC, location 9318 Georgia 5, current agent outlet manager, Raheem Barini, proposed agent outlet manager, Kristin Patel, grab fees have been paid into the finance department. Well, Mr. Patel, come down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chinton Patel, 9318 Georgia Highway 5, Douglasville, Georgia.
And, Mr. Patel, this a new license or a renewal?
It's a new license.
New license, and how long you been doing business?
At this location or? At this location, we just took over one month ago.
Okay, and you do have experience?
Yes, sir.
And how do you go about training your staff for alcoholic?
We do train them to look at their ID if a person seems under 30 years of age, and we also have a scanning system in our register, so we scan the IDs.
And you do have a scanning system?
Yes, sir.
And you bring in someone to do all the teaching, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what would be your hours of operation?
Uh, we are 24 hours.
24 hours. Okay. Mayor and Council? Okay, at this time, we have to hold a public hearing. So if anyone in the audience, and they're gonna have five minutes, five minutes to speak before, five minutes to speak against. At this time, we go open up the public hearing for anyone that want to come down and speak against this item.
Okay.
Okay, look like we have no takers, five minutes to speak for this item. Okay, we have no takers. At the time, we gonna close the public hearing, and if you come back on Monday, we will have a decision, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Madam Mayor, item C, authorize the mayor to sign a non-inclusive license agreement with Courtware Government Software Solutions for Court Management Systems Software Services. Ms. Cochran, come down and your name and your address for our record, please, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And Council. My name is Angela Cochran, I am the Court Service Administrator, 2083 Fairburn Road, and I'm bringing in front of you the, it's our contract or non-agreement with Courtware, which is now known as Justice 1, but I kept it as Courtware because I didn't want to confuse anybody and then put Justice 1 in there, because it's been Courtware for 100 years. But they are going up, as most people have since COVID, they're going up from $3.25 a citation to $5 a citation.
$5 a what?
So that's $1.75 per citation. And they're doing like a $2,000 a month minimum, but we, we're always over $2,000 a month, so I don't think that'll be a problem. They haven't increased this pay since 2018, so it's been almost five years.
How long is this contract, Ms. Cochran?
It, it, we can come out of the contract at any time. It's not really a contract, it's just a user agreement, but anytime that we feel like we can find a better deal, but I have started looking, but everybody I've called uses Courtware, so.
So that means you have been searching?
Yes.
And, and this the best deal so far?
So far, this has been the best deal.
So we think, okay. Mayor, Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Cochran, do we normally have 400-plus tickets a month?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious, I, I've never asked that question, didn't know how many we would average writing.
We usually have around about 800 a month.
Okay, so it would be?
Now that they're, and it's been going up.
So it would not be an issue then? This $2,000 a month minimum has just been put in this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Anyone else? Ms. Cochran, thank you, and keep, keep on the lookout.
I'm always a looking.
If you see a, a good deal come along, come ahead and let us know.
Courtware does have really good software program for our court.
Okay, you never had any problem out of?
Yeah, it's, it's great.
Okay. All right, thank you, but.
All right, thank you.
It was the mayor and council pleasure, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Okay, thank you, Ms. Cochran. Okay, let's move right along to item D, authorize the mayor to sign a 20, 23 Burns Justice Assistant Grant Certification, and Chief JR Davidson.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor and Council, JR Davidson, 2083 Fairburn Road. Over a month ago, you approved for the police department to apply for the Department of Justice burn grant. This is a paperwork item, there's a certification that has to be signed by the mayor, and we have to wait 30 days after the public hearing for that, when you made that approval.
So this, once a year, we apply for this grant?
Yes, sir, every year we get the, we get the grant.
Okay, good. Your counsel? Okay, if there no, of course, for mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday and thanks again.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Appreciate you handling that Public Safety Committee. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on then to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight, to authorize the mayor to sign an underground distribution construction agreement, trenching within tree drip line and release for construction agreement with Georgia Power to accompany easements previously approved in item 23-233. And Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. Yeah, this item basically is pretty straightforward, correlates with the easement that was approved, approved previously for the contractor to basically relocate underground and overhead distribution lines to support the Jesse Davis Park improvements project.
Any questions, comments? From council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. We will place this on a consent agenda, if that's all right with everybody? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Madam Mayor, just real quick, my question earlier, Mr. Bass?
Yes, sir.
During our recess answered the question, that particular hole in the construction there has been completed, and from what I understand, our resident pro has signed off on it, said that they did a great job.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Great to hear.
That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, item 15, this Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight under transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Uh-huh. We'll move on to other business, is there any other business from council members like to bring to the floor? Yes, sir, Councilman Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to take the opportunity once again to thank our staff for a great job that they've done over the past two weeks now with the series of concerts that we have coming and looking forward to the last one on Saturday, and I'm sure that it will be handled in just as professional and greater a way as the others have. I just want to take the opportunity to thank them, and we're looking forward to that. Great job.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams, we appreciate that. The sentiment, of course, goes for the entire council that you've expressed. Any other comments or concerns from council members? I did have a question, City Manager, I've looked at the weather, and of course, it's raining now, and Saturday, last Saturday, it was threatening to rain, and so I had several questions, people were calling, texting, seeing me, and asking what we're gonna do in the result if it happened to be inclement weather. And so from my understanding, if you can just explain that we will keep the concert going unless we hear or see some thunder?
Actually, I'm gonna turn that over to the deputy chief because they have that as par as their emergency management plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have plans, it's, it really depends on lightning and high winds is what we're concerned about. If it's just rain, the concert should go on or could get delayed shortly, but if lightning comes within about 12 to 13 miles is when we're gonna look at having to evacuate the amphitheater.
So it's not just thunder, it's, it's the wind that you're concerned about?
Wind can be dangerous, too.
Yes, sir.
Items start flying around and stuff, so it's the wind and lightning is what concerns us.
Okay, so just bring an umbrella if it rains.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes, sir, Councilman Watts.
So in that case, let's just say for the sake of argument, there's a threat of rain potentially, are we allowing folks to come in with umbrellas?
Yeah, I don't think we've denied, there were a few people with umbrellas last week, so, I mean, we're not turning those things.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Thank you so much, that's a great question, Councilman Watts. Any other comments or concerns or issues? Thank you, I don't see any. We'll move on to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome, thank you, Attorney Jordan. Our police department, our deputy chief, Davidson?
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, deputy chief, or, excuse me, City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am, just to remind you all that we have an executive session after this and for staff, the only staff, I need are myself, Karen, and Chelsea, and you all might want to take a break in between this meeting and executive session.
I heard some sighs. Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Any, we don't have any staff reports. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward. You have five minutes to talk to myself and council members about any business germane to the city of Douglasville. Okay, no takers, as Councilman Davis can say. So we'll move on then, yes, sir?
I did make one comment, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
The police department had a employee recognition and award ceremony this past week, and they recognized a number of officers for going above and beyond the duty, and they
Wow.
Just indicate and thank once more, once again, the quality of professionalism we have in our police department, yes, outstanding officers. And, you know, as I mentioned, you know, they, they always treat us with respect, obviously, that's, that's gonna be inevitable, but what's amazing is that they treat every citizen in the city
Yes.
Exactly the same as they treat us, and that's what's, what's great about the officers that we have on duties. Thank you, Assistant Chief.
Thank you so much. Ms. Samantha isn't here, but she did a report to Rotary this past Monday, and I think it's in the paper today, and the Rotary folks that attended the concert said that the security was, they felt very safe, but it wasn't intrusive, and that everyone was very courteous and kind and very helpful. And so we appreciate not only our Douglasville police officers, of course, you all are the, the department for the state of Georgia of the year, but the security team that you hired as well. They said, you know, it's not intrusive, but they felt safe, and that's the main thing outside of the artist, is coming to a facility and feeling like that you're safe and that someone will respond if something happens, so thank you so much for that as well. We got great comments from people from the Rotary Club about the concert series and the police department. Okay, yes, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, I just need a correction for staff, I need Ms. Jordan and Mr. Bass for a portion of the executive session for a last-minute ad.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, City Manager. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any and no comments from our citizens and delegates. Well, this meeting, I'll open the floor for motion to adjourn into executive session to
Second.
Okay, to discuss matters from personnel and property acquisition, we have to put that in there, we can't talk about everything. So I do have a first and a second. All those in favor of adjourned to executive session to discuss these matters, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have, and we are adjourned into executive session to discuss the following matters, personnel and property acquisition after a brief recess. This meeting is adjourned.